We will call to order a school committee meeting on April 11th, 2016. Are meetings that now have become weekly recurrence? Occurrence and recurrence?
Mm-hmm. 6:31.
Uh, we have no new business?
Nope.
Uh, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes from April 4th?
Uh-huh.
Is there a motion to approve?
So...
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments, edits? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We do not have... Do we have... Robin, are you visiting or just...
I'm here in official.
Okay.
Official...
So, we do not have any visitors. We're skipping our visitors' comments section. Going straight to the reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first item on your agenda is a field trip request form on behalf of the, uh, Boys Varsity Baseball Team. Uh, if they want to go to the Baseball Hall of Fame. And, uh, the trip is on May 20th. And I have reviewed and everything is in compliance with your policy, so I would recommend approval.
I'll make an motion to approve the field trip to the Baseball Hall of Fame or the varsity baseball field, I mean team. Second?
Okay. Any questions?
Great opportunity. It is a great opportunity. Took me till I was 60 to play there. I played there when I turned 60. Played a game on the field. Over there. It was great. If you're looking for other opportunity, maybe they're looking for chaperone. Well, if you want to go play. I'm saying this.
Okay. All right, so all in favor to approve the, uh, field trip for the Boys Varsity Baseball Team? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, it's all right. I'd like to switch the next two items and talk about the social emotional learning proposal before we talk about the budget.
Absolutely. All these things are emotional for us anyway, so...
You got that right. Um, back on March 21st, I gave you a proposal for a rather comprehensive look at ways to meet, uh, students' social emotional needs. Um, that include, um, sort of a multi-tiered approach to all of this, including, um, use of a program for all grade levels, all kids called Peace Builders. Um, to then look at, um, also bringing in some other programs, um, with regard to, uh, using the Bridge Family Resource Center for a free program this spring to help students with anger management issues. Um, and to institute a structured learning center at Granby Junior Senior High School. And then also to look at some outside of, uh, school, um, offerings through, uh, a grant that was due last Tuesday that I wrote fast and furious and managed to make the deadline. Um, with a little help from Mr. Gavalo and the folks at Beckett Chimney Corners YMCA. And so, we will await to hear about that. Uh, in addition to the proposal, I also did share with you a report on the Peace Builders Program, uh, some research that has been done on it. Um, also gave you some numbers with regard to reported numbers of students within the district who are experiencing social emotional difficulties, as was reported by the principals, and then also some numbers reported by pupil services. And then some links that you could look at, things online, so... I would hope that the committee could make some decisions, uh, about this tonight because the clock is ticking to get things, uh, in place, particularly if we're going to do things in the fall.
These, the numbers you sent, these 180 or so?
Yep.
How, who, how are their needs being met presently, the last year, the year before? What, is it the social worker or is it the...
Social workers. It's falling on classroom teachers without a whole lot of training to be able to handle. Um, some of the students that are being reported, um, from pupil services obviously are going out because we don't have programs in-house to, uh, sufficiently provide supports to them. So, we don't have a good continuum of services as we are required to have, uh, particularly here at the high school. So, you're either in with the general population or you're out. There is nothing in the middle. And there really needs to be.
So, there are no students at the high school that are on IEPs?
Um, that, the numbers were not... The numbers were not reported to me that way, so...
And other, is that student success plans?
Nope. That's just other students that are being reported as having social emotional issues with no category assigned to them.
So, does that mean in the social worker log under the high school for 60?
Mm-hmm.
That there could potentially be students who are on IEPs or 504s?
Yeah.
It was just all lumped together?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And none of those are on 504 plans for accommodations?
I don't know that. I, I don't have that data.
Wasn't reported to you anyway?
Correct.
It seems to me they should at least be on those if they having some issues. They should be on...
Yeah, I think that a fair number of them are on some sort of a plan. I think that there are some that probably are not, or some that, you know, are being looked at at this particular moment in time.
Is that a piece of information that could change the decision or does it not really impact what we're going to be...
I don't think so.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is provide a comprehensive program that meets the needs of the general population, that provides supports bea- above and beyond that for kids who need it, and then provides programming outside of the school day, um, to just kind of continue the process after school is, is closed.
So, if we were to, um, approve the Peace Builders?
Mm-hmm.
How do you envision it being implemented? I mean, I, you know, I read through, I, I get the, understand the process. I just want to know if you envision it being to the letter or if you envision it being slightly different or...
Well, what they do is that they will send trainers out to the district, um, and probably that would happen, uh, before school starts in the fall. So that everybody gets some sort of training. Um, and then each of, uh, the schools put together a, an implementation plan. And that's part of, of the work that they do, that there's a team established at each school to put together an implementation plan on how Peace Builders will play itself out within, within this particular school building.
So, the goal is to implement it by the start of next school year?
That would be correct. Yep.
And, and you see the principals getting this all together and teachers being trained?
Mm-hmm.
Because it, to me, it seems if you're going to do it, you want to do it at the start of the school year.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a good question. We're in mid-April.
Right.
And then we have the summer break.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to have enough time to be ready in a meaningful way?
In essence, it's a four-hour training for teachers?
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, they will come here for a day or two, um, because there are trainings that they can also do with support staff. Uh, and like I say, once they do the four-hour training, then it's up to a group that is established at each building, um, or, uh, elementary and secondary at least anyway, to then come up with an implementation plan of how this gets implemented with kids.
And, uh, what is the feedback with the administrators? I'm assuming they've gone through website and all of that?
Yep. I think they're, they're ready to embrace it. I think they see it as part of the beha- the positive behavioral, um, interpen- intervention supports, um, and part of the restorative practices. Basically, both of those programs have sort of begun in the middle with taking a look at how we're dealing with kids that are presenting at a higher level than a tier one. So, now it's time to build the foundation for all kids.
And I know as part of, um, the data collection, there are scales that have to be...
Correct.
...completed along the way.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I know I've said this a few times, but, um, I can't emphasize enough that if we're going to do this, I think we, we want to know that it's working.
Yes.
So, we're going to want to see, um, just the research.
Right.
From my past experience, is there, is there a buy-in from the, the staff at this point? What's been their involvement in this?
Um, the proposal came from a group that worked during the last full professional day, which was the social workers, the school nurses, the guidance counselors, um, and the speech and language pathologists all got together in a group and went through and took a look at some of this stuff.
Have they presented to the staffs of the schools?
Um, that I don't know, to be honest. I, I can't answer that question without asking principals.
It seems to me there has to be, if there's not a buy-in to begin with, it can't be looked as a, "We're going to do this," but they have not...
This would also... This would also satisfy the legal requirement under the bullying prevention statute, which is that we have a comprehensive district-wide program. They do not right now.
So, does that mean it's not necessarily a buy-in, but it's a mandate? It's a regulatory requirement?
Yeah, pretty much. We have to have something. It's the law. It's been the law since 2010.
Yeah. And, and that's actually, that's, that's good to know. But, uh, to Jim's point, in all these things that we're doing, whether it's curriculum change or change of this nature, um, some type of change management.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably cyclical. I don't know how we're doing it, whether we're doing it, and how we're doing it. But it would be good to know whether or not what we're going to go with is, you know, the option folks really embraced or are willing to embrace. We don't know whether or not they're going to embrace yet, some of them probably, but it would be good to know. I mean, that, that probably affects the success of the program as well, right?
Exactly.
And again, I thought the elementaries last year or so was doing the PBS, the Positive Behavior System that they were incorporating in, which was, would have taken care of the...
It's not fully implemented. I'll be very honest. They're working busily at what would be called Tier Two. What happens when there's an office referral? How do you provide supports to students who are not meeting with success in the classroom? But there really is no programming systematically being done within the regular classroom.
This, this is for the, this is the, the general...
Yeah.
...education. This isn't just for special education. This is a whole philosophy change.
I, I understand that, but if we've already had something, why wouldn't we continue with that?
We don't.
But it would save us the money that we have problems with. That's, you know, that's another expense that...
But what I'm telling you is we don't have Tier One. Positive behavioral intervention supports is a three-tier system, just like response to intervention on the academic side. Tier Two is where the work is being done right now. Tier One has yet to be developed, and this is what we're looking at.
So, Jim, your question is why not use it for Tier One and Tier Three? If we're already implementing it, um, one, one system at Tier Two, why not expand it?
Well, what gets built at Tier Two would be a tie, there would be a tie-in between the two tiers with Tier One. This would be the Tier One, the language that everybody uses, the talking about seeking out wise people, giving up put-downs, you know, being a positive force, all of those six principles that are the, are the Peace Builders Program. That becomes the language of the culture of the building. When you get to Tier Two and suddenly you're in an office referral or looking at a small group with a social worker, they're going to build off of that language that everybody has. Tier Three means that you're really looking at some sort of more therapeutic component.
So, it's, Tier Two is something that's in addition to...
Tier One. Correct.
Tier One.
Correct.
And Tier Three would be in addition to Tier Two?
Correct.
And getting back to the buy-in question, I mean, how would you go about that?
Yeah, that's, that's part of change management. It's, there's, um, I can't imagine if, you know, not reading with your eyes because you guys have more experience in this, but it makes sense to me. I'm assuming it probably makes sense to most folks who read it. But I'm not looking at buying from a "I want it and I don't want it" perspective, but how really do I see this relevant and, uh, beneficial for how I do it, especially since, you know, you, your point that this is not just for special education, this is for everybody? Somebody who's not really in special education, is it really, does it really mean as much to them, uh, so from that perspective? Is it going to impact and benefit them as much? Uh, otherwise, the buying comes gradually anyway. It doesn't happen from day one or anything.
And that's why Peace Builders asks the principal of the building to get a core group of teachers, social worker, whoever at the table to build an implementation plan for their building, building specific. Um, so that way, you know, it's taken into account, how are we going to roll this out? For example, NIESC is heavily into, uh, the high school doing, high schools doing what they call advisory periods. So, the kids are meeting in small groups with an adult, not necessarily a teacher. It could be anybody in the building, you know, to do some work on a regular basis. It could be very, could very well be that the implementation plan, and I haven't spoken with Mr. Gavalo about this, but it certainly would very well could be the implementation plan is to set up an advisory system and introduce the principals through advisories. You know, I mean, it could be that simple.
My, I guess, my only concern, I, you know, from what I've researched on the program, it certainly seems like it could be an effective program. And from their data, it seems like legit, um, step, statistical studies and the way that they gather their data. My concern is that spending this kind of money, um, to satisfy a mandate as opposed to doing this because we really believe in it. You know, because the former would be check to the state.
Exactly. Right.
And we're still spending upwards of 5,000 plus, right? And, um, you know, six months into it, it's not, it's not really...
Well, that's why that whole building team that does the implementation plan and monitors what's going on, that's key, essential element of the training when it first gets rolled out by Peace Build- Peace Builders. And then it's up to that whole building team to constantly, you know, how are we doing? Um, are we doing something on a monthly basis with kids or on, uh, whatever basis? Are there things that are being done to put the, the principals forward? Uh, I don't know if you read, you know, how much you read of the Sentinel, but every year you'll see Swift River Elementary School does a peace rally with all of the kids, and that's part of this. That's part of their implementation plan with Peace Builders. Um, you know, there's the, the Peace Builders pledge that, you know, can get recited over the intercom system every day, you know, those kinds of things. There's a lot of different ways in which to do this. The training of custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, so that every adult understands what the program is about and knows what their role is within it is, is a critical piece of making this happen. I will tell you that of the programs that were looked at, this was probably one of the cheapest. Um, and the lens was, we know we have to do this other thing to satisfy the law, but what program would give us the broader perspective, not just how do we prevent bullying, but how do we build those social emotional skills in all of our kids? That was the task that was given to the group that did the research.
And actually, that aspect of it, uh, you know, as I, I was reading it, was most attractive to me, that everybody will have some level of understanding as to what these mean, uh, to the, to the district holistically. So, a couple of things. One is, I'm sure everyone may have something to say, but based on the interviews that we just had with the pupil services and, uh, hearing them say great things about the proposals that we had in front of us, uh, I just, I don't want to forget thanking all those who actually worked on this and put it together. And one of them, I don't know which one it was, just I went back to my superintendent and instead or principal, whoever it was, "Hey, here's something, just why don't we do something like this?" So, looks like, uh, we're on to something. But also, one of them had a question, and I still have that question too. One, I believe it was Deanne's question to ask about the, uh, SCL. And she asked, hey, you know, "Can you comment on, uh, our proposed program?" She said, "Which one?" So, I still have that question. Are we voting on this whole thing or are we going piece by piece, starting with the peacemaker and then, uh, waiting for a while and adopting the other pieces? How are we doing this?
Well, I'll be honest with you. The Peace Builders thing, they intend to fund out of Title II-A, so it will be at no cost to the district. It will come from a grant. The anger management program that the Bridge wants to bring in this spring is with students who were involved in the court system, and the court system is pushing for this to be done. Usually, they go to the Bridge in Amherst. They're willing to come to us to make it easier for families. That's also at no cost to the district. Um, the, um, school-based services proposal for the structured learning center, that particular program, as we talked about, uh, last week, would be funded from tuitions that we would not be sending students out for. We currently have four students who are being sent out to the tune of almost $200,000, um, plus a bus ride. So, when you put that all together, that would pay for the program. Uh, knowing what we know about the budget numbers currently, if student number five comes through the door and we don't have an in-house program, we're looking at $50,000 more, plus a bus ride. Where if we had a program in-house, we could service them. I will tell you that one of the students that we're currently sending out actually came into the district with an IEP that reads, "They're supposed to get these services in, in district, but we don't have them." So, we've had to put that student in and out of district placement.
So, based on our recent conversation, is it fair to think or say that we are expecting to implement that piece fairly soon too?
Yes.
Because we want those four students at the very least to come back?
Right.
Is that, and that was, one of the reasons why I asked my, uh, initial question, all those numbers that we were looking at, uh, did, did we have to have a better picture or more clear picture as to where everybody fits? Um, but what you're saying is if we have the program instituted, if the numbers increase from four to five or six, we can actually make adjustments to accommodate in-house? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Where right now, we can't. Basically, it's no therapeutic component, regular ed, which sets these particular kids up for failure. And these are not heavy hitter kids. These are not necessarily kids who need to be in and outside placement. They just need some therapeutic hands in with them. And to me, it would be a travesty to still send them out and take them away from access to the general curriculum and take them away from access to their peers. And that's what we would be doing if we don't do this.
Are you got a question?
I do, I have actually two things. The first thing, and I'm hearing everything you're saying, and, and, and part of my brain agrees completely with everything you're saying. Part of me also wonders, only being here two years and, and seeing things that have happened, are we trying to do too many things at the same time? That's my one fear. I know what you're saying, and, and I'm hearing you completely, but I'm a little bit worried that putting all these pieces in at the same time is, is going to be harder with all the mandates that our educators already have. The second thing, it's really been bugging me, and I, and I keep looking at this, I've looked at it about 20 times, is the, the Beckett Chimneys part of the program. I'm worried about voting on that one because it's purely dependent upon whether we get grants, and if we voted to approve it and then didn't get those grants...
It's a great phrase. It's called "subject to appropriation."
But I'm just saying.
Yeah. I'm serious. Yep.
And also, my other question is the Davis Foundation, last I knew, because I've written that grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the last I knew, they were working in, in Hamden County and not Hampshire or Franklin.
Right. And that, those proposals that you see from Beckett are only ones that they've written for other districts that were given to us examples of what we could do and not intended to be the actual proposal. What we wrote last week was for the 21st Century Learning Grant, and we went for the whole maximum number of dollars that they would give us.
Which is what?
175.
Which you never get.
Right. But we figured put in for it all, and if they give us something lesser, then the program obviously has to get scaled back, um, to be whatever that lesser thing is.
So, I see in there the in-kind costs, which normally mean that comes from the district. Um, and I know this is an example, now, now that you've explained that, but, um, what would our in-kind costs comprise of?
Basically, our...
This is just a sample.
Yeah. Our in-kind contribution would basically be the facilities so they could run the program. It would be their staff. We would just basically give them a home to be in. And the way we, the way, and in fact, the director of the Berkshire Outdoor Program actually did the budget part while, um, I was working on the narrative, and, um, you know, wrote in some really nice pieces, particularly for the summer portion of the program, to be able to actually pay for buses and whatnot, to take entire families up to Berkshire Outdoor for a weekend. So that kids and parents and whatever, you know, kids learning some of these skills around leadership and, and self-regulation and self-awareness and social regulation and all of that business, be able to share with parents what they have learned so that they can be followed through at home, and to be able to allow the family to participate together so that, um, you know, it would work that way.
Is it possible for us to see that example rather than the one that's here? Because, because I keep looking at this one and thinking, if this is what we're looking at, that's what's confusing me. And I, and I'm, that's hard for me to vote on. Unless I'm missing what was actually written for us.
Yeah, that, that does not include the verbiage "from." I just have to find the file. I'm trying to find the file and talk at the same time. That's my good thing.
Never works for me.
You should be able to, you opened up the folder, should be a, um, yep, there you go.
I knew I'd find it. And this is one of the most bizarre grants I have ever written.
I, I'm very familiar.
There are so many pages, and then you'd be in one part of the thing, and they'd say, "Well, according to addendum whatever." And I think to myself, did I even fill out addendum whatever?
I'm very familiar. This is the grant.
Oh, my word! Okay, so, let me put on some glasses because this is teeny tiny. Um, so, we would be looking at an after-school program as part of this grant. That would be at least a couple of days a week. Obviously, people from our staff, if they wanted to work in the program, they could. But, um, you know, Beckett Chimney Corners again would take care of, of all of that There would be some field trips to visit, um, the Berkshire Outdoor Center in there. And basically, it would be a lot of team building and leadership development stuff that would be done during the school, um, the school, after-school program. So, um, it'd be two days a week for 30 weeks, and then two family weekend visits, um, for the program. And again, no in, no monetary costs on our part, just use of the facilities. Uh, the summer program, we're looking for, um, 10 weeks, or actually eight weeks of programming for kids, two weeks for training for staff. That would probably be built in two four-week segments. And so, students, if they've got travel plans with their family or whatever, you know, could attend, attend one or the other, or both if they wanted to. So, again, it would be the principles that you see in those, those two proposals, you know, the team building stuff, the, the project-based learning business, all of that business would be sort of the meat of the proposal. And then again, some, um, you know, visits to Beckett Chimney Corners as well to do the summer program. So, they would basically use the elements of the two proposals you've seen in order in, as their curriculum as it were. Let's put it that way. In terms of the implementation of that, it would be onsite here primarily with their staff, although certainly if they're looking for additional instructors and newer instructors from Granby who wanted to be a part of that could certainly do that, uh, as well as some trips out to, um, Berkshire Outdoor Center for team building with the kids and their families.
And if we get the grant, then it would be no cost to us, other than the building?
That's correct.
And this is specifically for Tier Two?
This is, um, probably more of a Tier Two, although it could be open to just about anybody. This is probably more of a tier two, although it could be open to just about anybody. You know, if we got the full $175,000, we could potentially open up enough seats for 100 kids.
What is the likelihood of that happening?
Slim and none. But apply for the maximum and hope that you get something else. The minimum grant we would get would be $50,000, so we just reduce the scope in the number of kids that would be serviced. So certainly, that part of the proposal, we could do "subject to appropriation" on the part of the grant.
Yes, because I'm wondering how we would prioritize this. You know, how would you prioritize that? I suspect that Peace Builders would be a top priority.
Absolutely, Peace Builders. Absolutely, the structured learning center. Because Peace Builders, we can fund through a grant. The structured learning center, it's those four tuitions plus a bus ride that takes care of it. We just re-code the money.
Okay, so...
The Peace Builders, again, and again, I'm not saying it's a bad program, but you're talking K through 12, starting if it's voted successfully, kickoff in the fall. K through 12.
Yep.
And the second question, as asked before, I know you're talking about the second piece for these four students. Because we wouldn't have to pay for them out. Is that, is that a definite?
That they would come back?
That they are coming back here?
Yeah. Yeah. These are four students who could very appropriately be serviced right here at the high school with therapeutic supports in place, would be able to, as they demonstrate their readiness to do that, go into a regular classroom. I think Emily, the last time you talked about, you know, students being successful in math, that's maybe the first class that they pop into with some support, you know. So they do have the opportunity to access the general curriculum because these are not kids who are developmentally delayed, or autistic, or whatever else. They just need a therapeutic component to what's going on in the lives of their...
And those are presently high school students, middle school students? I mean, how long are we going to continue to have them in our system? Trying to look at the age of them, their years?
Seventh through 10th, if I'm correct in remembering who they are.
Someone could, well, not that they're going to be in this program, but they'll have support for year after year, hopefully, if they're able to continue.
Yeah. The Weare Public Schools started this program back in 2012 or '13, one of those. And it's, they've grown it. They started small, which would be my recommendation. Start small with those you know you could bring back. Let the program work out its bumps and bruises, because every program that first starts has its hiccups and whatnot. Weare has gotten to the point now where they are accepting students from other districts into, districts are paying them tuition to help offset the cost because they've grown the success of the program to the point where they're able to do that. That would not be my recommendation right out of the gate. But certainly, if one or two more kids moved into the district during the course of the year, next year, they could be easily absorbed into that program.
So it's working where, as you said? Anywhere else locally that has been successful?
It's in Hoy Oak. I'm trying to think. He mentioned a whole, there's a fair number of districts out in Worcester County and a little bit east, further east that have used it successfully.
So that, it makes me wonder why, at least right now, many districts, probably most districts, are not doing this, bringing, you know, children such as those four that we're talking about, and there may be more, back to the district. If it is because they didn't think of it, because this is a new thing, that's good. But if it's because there are some challenges and difficulties that come with that program that may, just like Maria was saying, that may add additional labor burden on our folks on this side, is it going to jeopardize a success, potential success of the program? Well, meanwhile, we want it to be successful, great. But is there also a risk that we may not get there because it may be more than we can chew all at once?
Not the way the program is structured. You know, obviously, you would hire the academic teacher. They would provide the therapeutic support for the program.
But to be, although more blunt, and I know that you told us that it was a wash anyway, but I don't want to really make a decision because of budgetary reasons that there might be a fifth one and then risk the kids and the school system all at once and jump into it. But if it's purely, yes, we have the recipe for success, we know where we're going, and this is what we need to do, then I would be, you know, interested in that.
In my mind, this is the right thing to do for our kids. I think it's sad that we do not have the resources in-house. These are not heavy-duty, heavy-hitter kids. They're kids that just need a little therapeutic support around them. And it breaks my heart to think that we can't service them here. Yeah, we have no choice but to send them out into programs with heavy-duty kids.
It certainly makes sense to get our students back here.
I agree with that.
Totally. And now just, as mentioned here, $198,000, rough figure, plus transportation. What's the transportation cost approximately, would you think? Or what would be saved?
I'm not exactly sure. I'd have to, I can, which I can do. I can give you a few more. You know, I can go in and look at what the bus runs are and who's going where, and...
But would all of that money be needed to do this, fund this program?
The proposal that is been presented...
Would we have some savings that could be put towards other needs within the district?
No, it would pretty much be a wash. The contract we're looking at is $155,000, which provides their staff as well as access to a vehicle. So that if a child needed a ride to outside counseling or a family needed a ride to get to school, because those are barriers for some of these kids and their families, that they would have access to that vehicle. And then we would hire the academic teacher. So put all that together, and you're talking about $220,000, give or take.
So what I'm hearing is that you feel relatively confident that the grant is going to cover the Peace Builders?
Yeah, I'll amend the grant, so that's what it does.
And, and we're covered for the structured learning center? And anything above that for recommendations will be...
Right. Again, the Bridge program is at no cost. Because that's just trying to help some kids who have, the court system has said, you need some help with anger management here, and here's a resource that can do it for you for nothing. This will be a first for the Bridge to actually come into a, to be able to take their program and bring it into a district versus kids coming to them. So that will be interesting. And the kids that have been identified as being in need of this program, both they and their parents are on board. So I think the Bridge would like to at least try and do something between now and the end of the year with these students, and then we'd see where we'd go from there for next year.
And that provides something totally separate than the structured learning.
Right, right. Yeah.
And how about as far as these other recommendations?
The shared behavioral specialist, actually, I'm waiting for Andy Paquette to finish off an agreement between Hadley and Granby to share a behavioral specialist. We're looking at a 60-40 split. And we're right now paying $65,000 is the projected amount for this year for contracted services for a behavioral specialist for two days a week. We can save $19,000 at least, part of which could help fund the structured learning center and get three days of services by sharing with Hadley. We just have to draw up an agreement that the two districts would sign about how the cost share works. Who's going to be paying for the position, who's going to provide the benefits, how the bill back is going to lead to work. TMS has done this in other districts, so that should be a pretty easy agreement to draw up.
And Hadley's on board with it?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, she sent me today a potential job description and a potential posting so that we could move forward with that.
And we had other things on here, too. Physical education, 40 minutes a week.
That's came from the School Nurses and Social Workers Group with regard to the Peace Builders thing. You know, obviously, they looked at some other things in terms of increasing time of staff for wellness issues. I don't see that based on the conversation we're about to have, happening out of the gate. The big thing that would impact all of the staff would be the Peace Builders program.
Right.
The rest of it really doesn't have a huge impact on, on the rest of the staff.
So if we make a motion tonight, it's going to be for the Peace Builders program and the structured learning center?
And hopefully, the anger management program as well.
And that's pending the...
Well, the Bridge, that's free.
Okay.
Yeah. Peace Builders, I'll take out of a grant. And obviously, the after-school summer program would be subject to appropriation by a grant, or subject to the receipt, you know, receiving the grant funding to make that happen.
That was the Beckett one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So that's priority number three, then?
And obviously, you can do a lot of things during the school day, but for a lot of these kids, there needs to be an extension of that learning outside of the school day.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I think my only, I mean, the program itself looks great. You know, the funding, the questions have been answered. My only concern was the timing, you know, for the being this year with the new superintendent coming in, a brand-new director of people services. It just seems like this is such a massive undertaking. You know, I'd hate to see us, you know, "Hi, welcome to Granby. Here's this giant project, and we've just completely voted in a redesign of how we're going to work with pretty at-risk kids." That's my only concern. It is not the program, it's not any of those things, it's just the timing and are we asking...
And everything all at once.
Everything at once, you know, just it seems like next of all is really going to be, you know. But you know what? Maybe that's, maybe that's what our district needs.
You know, the flip side of that is that if you don't address these issues, they are going to continue to grow. And between the three buildings, we've identified about 180 students who are somewhere within this realm.
And that's about 20%, roughly?
Correct.
100 of them are graduating this year?
No.
The other question, too, that I think kind of, you know, going on yours is, is it really that big of an undertaking? I mean, it's a change. I'm not so sure it's as big as, say, the difference in testing from, you know, Enpassa Park, or, it's a change.
It's a change, and I would just hope that the constituents are somewhat on board with this now. Because otherwise, it's going to be viewed as us making the decision, and here you go. This, because we don't have to do anything. We just have to make sure there's money for it. But it's the people out there who have to do everything, and if they're not on board with it...
But sometimes that is how changes are made, Jim.
Yeah, but that's not the way.
It's not always a democratic process.
That's not what the Granby school system needs right now. We've heard that stuff before. We've heard it through our student interviews. There are some issues here, and I don't think we need to keep throwing more at them, as good as it may be.
But here's what I'm hearing from teachers.
Okay.
I'm hearing from teachers that there are more and more and more students. Our kindergarten classrooms have a lot of students with these kinds of issues, and the teachers are struggling without some support in place.
I hear it from students. You know, students saying that there's, you know, there are a lot of distractions in the classroom and a lot of, you know, unruliness that is not getting addressed in an appropriate manner. So, you know, I'm hearing that side of it as well.
Right. So you flip that coin over, and the longer you let this go unaddressed, the bigger the problem's going to be.
Right, but this is not the magic pill that's just going to fix all of this.
I'm not so sure there is a magic pill.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, when you're looking at that, we just can't project it as this is the map that's going to fix all of this, because it doesn't happen without the people who are working in their schools every day. You know, program's not going to fix everything. It's a help. The supports are a help, but, you know, it takes a lot more than that, so...
Absolutely. But again, you don't do anything, then you've got a problem that compounds itself.
So I have one last question. Given that we just hired a people services, director of people services, do we have to make a decision tonight and here? Or should we have some input from that individual as well? Or at least some consultation, because they are taking over all these things come whatever?
The problem is, is that we're coming up on team meetings for these kids. We have to write IEPs, so the longer we wait to make a decision, the more difficult it is.
It seems to me we have lots of questions, but looking at it in the big picture, it seems to me this is something that sort of needs to be done. If everyone's ready to jump right in with it for the good of our kids who need this and support the staff, I guess it's worth to give it a try, and hopefully, it will all work with everyone's support.
That is, I mean, the way you put it, that's how I look at it, that this aligns with what we would like to do and see in our district to begin with. And I don't think anybody's questioning that. It's basically the implementation process and the speed of the implementation that, you know, is there any risk or not? And just educate ourselves and to make the right decision. But other than that, I think it's the right move. That's what we wanted to, we decided to do anyway.
And absent these supports, kids who are experiencing these kinds of issues cannot access the general curriculum with success. And I'm sorry, I'm going to sound preachy. It's my background. This is my sermon moment. But absent this stuff, kids are not ready to learn. So if you want to meet your first strategic goal, which is to make sure that you have a fully articulated and implemented curriculum, which means kids are learning those 21st century skills we want them to learn, this has to be addressed. This cannot be ignored.
And the other side of that is, it has to be measured. Because, you know, sitting here twice a month, we're not going to know unless we have... Unless we have, you know, data in front of us
Agreed.
and feedback from the administrators and from teachers.
On a regular basis.
On a regular basis, because I am all for, sometimes, you know, you just have to implement something and hope for the best. And, and, but you have to measure it along the way.
In the past, we've implemented things, and then a year later, we're hearing it never happened or people weren't on, so I think that's where our fear, you're feeling hesitation is because there's a fear of, a year from now, we're going to be sitting here hearing that something didn't happen, or, and if we can maybe put in place that voting this means we're going to get reports. You know what I mean? Because otherwise, so many things have passed us by because we get so busy, and then all of a sudden, we find out.
No, I agree.
A curriculum didn't happen, or...
Right. No, you need data on the efficacy of this. There's absolutely no question about that.
And it's not only about the data, it's also about, okay, well, maybe this part of the program's working really well. This one isn't working so well. How can we tweak it?
Right.
Because we know that that's going to happen.
Right.
We know that from the outset, it's not going to be a perfect program.
Right, absolutely.
So, you know, it's navigating our way through it. So at the end of the school year, we can say, you know what, overall, this is working well for our district.
So that's actually, as I said, a great thought, and we have to do it. Because that's one of our major gaps, that we implement things and we don't know where we are afterwards. Something that we have not been doing for a while, the reports from the administrators. I would think that since this aligns with our first goal, right, just that it would align with our first goal, our director of people services probably can just come on a regular basis and say, "This is where we are. This is what we implemented, this is what we expected as the outcome. This is what we got, and here's the gap, and this is what we're doing."
And Cheryl, I'm sure, would do that. That, I have no, no question about. She's all about data. She's worked in a district where she's had to be all about data.
So I think as we're officially implementing this, that is the second part that the school committee has a responsibility on, is how do we want this to be presented to us? And what do we want it to be? And, and what do we want it to look like? And not, okay, well, we'll deal with that down the road. I think that's part of implementation of this, is what are our expectations? You know, how do we want it, how do we want it presented to us?
Yeah.
Because then it becomes a procedure. And it's, you know, do we want it monthly, do we want it quarterly?
So that we don't forget too.
Exactly, exactly.
I think monthly is too much, to be honest. I think you're gonna get a, sort of, you can do a, particularly with Peace Builders, there's a pre-assessment that does get done at all levels. So you get the pre-assessment data, maybe dip in again mid-year, dip in again at the end of the year, and see what's happened. I think you've gotta understand that this kind of a change takes time to implement, to change the way the culture of the school works and the way that the kids process around this stuff takes time. That you're not gonna see growth in a month. You may not even see it in a quarter. You may have to wait a whole year to see any growth. So that would be my recommendation, is that, you know, you get some, some sort of pre-assessment data at the beginning of this, take a dip in in the middle of the year, and then take a dip in again at the end of the year.
But wouldn't it be fair to ask how the implementation is going?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Maybe even a quarterly basis? Like, I don't, it's not necessarily the growth that I'm...
And data.
Right.
It, it's, yes, I wanna know about that, but, but what I wanna know is, unlike what we did with the curriculum change, because then we just kinda forgot about it for a year, and then realized things hadn't happened like we thought they were going to, to hear it maybe on a quarterly basis, this is just where we are. Not necessarily how much growth there's been for students, but this is where we are. This is the point that we've made it to, we're working on this. Because otherwise, I think it's gonna, we're gonna feel like we don't know what's going on, and we will forget, because we get busy.
Like in the fall, for example, certainly, you know, Cheryl could present to you the building plans. You know, what is the Peace Builders building? What's the plan? You know, so that you know what the plan is, you know, then, you know, how's the plan going? Well, you know, we've, you know, bus drivers have been trained, or, you know, custodians have been trained. So there's some of those sort of benchmarks to make sure that, that you have the progress of that moving forward. And how is the implementation going, and, you know, what kinds of things are activities are teachers and kids involved in?
Yeah.
And speaking to Jim's question about, you know, just what do the, what do the staff think? And how do they feel about it? Because they're, you know, they're in the front lines every day. So just knowing what their feedback is, you know, it may not be these, you know, the data, but I think it's important to know.
So I think, as you said at the end, two steps. One is for us to begin the implementation, but also, we should have in one of the upcoming meetings, this conversation to lay out our expectations as to how we would like to track progress, then, you know, by that time, we may even have Carol here, I don't know. Since she's not associated with Holyoke, right? So she may have some availability to come over, and we can have some conversations and start that process.
So maybe knowing that once we get through the budget process, we can add that as an agenda item to formalize all of this.
Yes. So after the budget process, this is actually a good idea to add, I absolutely agree. And the other thing before we forget, since we're talking about evaluations and, you know, metrics and all that, I think we also made a promise to ourselves to self-evaluate as well as a school committee. So we'd like to do that as well. And it would be great to, you know, do it before you leave as well, since we spent the last year and a half with you, or, you know, more than a year with you, so we'd have some input, feedback, whatever.
This would be your time to evaluate us. So you...
No, just kidding.
Roll the switch, I would think you would be excited about that.
Just kidding, just kidding.
And obviously, it's gonna, we're gonna have to prepare better, because it's not just Judy, but we would like to have more input into that process.
No, I appreciate your thoughtfulness, I appreciate your questions, don't mishear me. I just, this is something I'm just so passionate about, that we have kids who are just, and I'm sure, you know clinically, that the numbers of kids in families that are experiencing social, emotional difficulties is just skyrocketing. And this is a statewide problem. MAS, it's been the thrust for this entire past year, it is the thrust for the Summer Institute yet again. So we are not alone in all of this, by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, and even Desi is focusing more on it.
So how do we vote? What is...
We can go proposal by proposal, if that's helpful to you. You know, I guess I would ask for a motion on the Peace Builders Program.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the... Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions, comments? All in favor to approve the Peace Builder Program, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The business with the Hadley Public Schools and getting, I mean, we'd have to have a behavioral specialist anyway, so I think that's just part of our budget process, and I've actually already programmed that into the budget. So I don't think that that necessarily needs a program. Your approval to allow us to bring the Birch Family Resource Center in to do that Anger Management Program with students that have been identified through the court system, that that would be helpful. And again, that's at no cost to the district.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor to approve the Birch Family Program in our district, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next would be the Structure of Learning Center at Granby Junior Senior High School.
I'll make a motion on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussions on that?
And our goal would be, again, to access the curriculum. They're gonna try to make sure that these students are not in a substantially separate program within their own building, that they, they're dealt with in, in accessing the curriculum, sort of the key thing, so... I'm sure of us that that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
I mean, minus major, major issues, but...
Right, right.
I don't wanna just quick, make sure we have a substantially separate program in our own building that our kids are in.
Exactly, and that's not the intent and purpose in this. And by any stretch of the imagination, by schools-based services, that's not their intent. Their intent is to find those pockets of success where kids can be integrated with the rest of the day. Like I say, these are not heavy-duty, you know, violent kids, they really aren't.
They just need help.
They just need a helping hand.
Any other comments? All in favor to approve the structured in-house program, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last one would be just approval pending grant funding for the after-school summer program to be sponsored by Berkshire Outdoor Center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it.
Cool. Should we adjourn, or?
That was the good news, now comes the not-so-good news. All right, back to the budget. I did print out the all-funds summary page, so that you could see it. Last week, I did receive, which had not been part of the former equation, the in-kind numbers from the town administrator. And we're looking at in-kind numbers at $2,091,204, which has categorically been subtracted from the amount that the town does for funding for the district. And the way, if you looked at the in-kind tab in the budget book I sent you, which is right in front of the all-funds tab, up at the very top is the, all the transportation numbers. Those numbers are voted separately in the town meeting, but we have those in the budget already. So that's part of the funding package that gets voted. So the appropriation from the town would be minimum net school spending, which is currently, right now, $5,147,789, plus the $305,000 override, plus the $855 and change for, excuse me, $852,844 for transportation. When you put all of those numbers together, and then you take off the rest of that $2 million, the available, or the net revenue from the town is $8,788,581, which leaves us with a $967,700 gap.
I'm really confused how, because last week, wasn't it...
Well, I didn't have the in-kind numbers.
So the in-kind, these numbers are the exact same numbers as a year ago?
No, some are up, some are down. We're in the neighborhood.
But the total?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're in the neighborhood. It's a little bit up.
Total in-kind is practically the same thing, except for a couple of hundred dollars. And I think the last few times when we looked at the figures, it was the same number. Because we were even going with the assumption that the in-kind was gonna be the same.
Right.
So I am, I'm a little confused, puzzled, whatever you wanna call it, as to how that actually is the large impact it is bringing us to this huge gap.
I'm gonna be honest with you, because I didn't put it in the formula last week. So that's why, it's in the formula now. It was the second set of eyes that helped me do that. So that was my error, for which I apologize.
So here's, here's a question. Given that these are all level, no change, are we saying that the operational side of our budget now is that $968,000 that we're talking about? It's purely operational? So then it becomes, I mean, it's good to know. So it becomes another question then. How did we really get to that point, especially given that the, one of the purposes of starting with that bottom-up or zero-based budget was to find whatever we may no longer need, so we could just weed those out? Yes, also find out some things that we need, but it looks like we found so many things that we really need that we did not have in the budget. It's a million-dollar difference, which goes back to another question that we had several times before. How did we operate with, without having those resources the last so many years?
What happened, I do know from, because I did try to get some history on this from TMS, and I do know that your school choice account had a fairly substantial balance in it that was being carried over. That was rated, it's gone.
That was many years ago, when we, when we actually had a surplus because of that. And I don't think it, I mean, John may remember, but I think it's been a decade since we last had, or close to it, when we had some surplus in there.
Not according to Andy, this happened probably about three or four years ago, that it was spent right down. Usually, the, the thinking of most districts is that you don't spend the current year's revenue, you spend a year back. And you hold on to the current year's revenue, because it does go up and down depending on the number of kids that are in choice, and when the state dips in and takes out data. So the numbers get adjusted for, across the year.
So let's, let's just go with that. And this is not to, you know, drill you on a thing, just to basically, I'm just trying to understand, just like everybody else. Let's say, four years ago, I mean, that was my first year. I don't remember having heard anything around that, but let's go with that. But even looking at last year, we're coming to this point. And last year, it wasn't really the, the smoothest year either. I mean, let's not forget that we had some gap, and we had to go to the town and just play our case.
When I came in, you were at a 600 and change gap.
I thought it was more than that.
And we got down, well, I think, I think it was at 800 at one point. And when I came in, you were down to about 600, and we did manage to get down to about...
360.
360, right.
So, and that, that was, so now we're looking at 600,000 more. Is this pre-evaluation, before we get into, you know, what is absolutely needed? What is, you know, maybe what is not now?
I sat with the administration, and we did manage to take some off of that. We eliminated the part-time summer help for technology that was requested. We did eliminate the halftime custodian for the maintenance department, that was also eliminated. Some tech things were taken off the table because of the elementary school building project. I did some things with David, we took a look at what potential E-rate funding and what I've estimated is conservative. But we did take some E-rate off of all of that as well.
Yeah, it's not in, reflecting on what we have in front of us yet.
Today, yes, it is.
But what is reflected is still the, all the things that we talked about back in February. Language teacher.
Yes.
Increasing special ed. Grade two teacher.
The increase in special ed at East Meadow, we're going to eliminate the evaluation team leader position and put that to direct services, so that's just shifting.
Who's gonna be in charge of that?
The liaisons will do like they do here at the high school, they'll run the meetings.
I just, that concerns me, only because we just talked about this huge increase in social, emotional issues. 100 kids coming in, are we now gonna ask?
They would not come into IEPs. Those 100 students are not IP material.
I, I, it's just such a value to have in those meetings, someone who knows the law so well, who's so thorough and holds everybody kind of really accountable, I just, I, that's a tough cut.
Well, the decision was, do we have somebody who runs meetings, or do we have somebody who provides services to kids? And that was the difficult decision.
So still with those cuts, Lee, this, this gap we're looking at on the sheet in the green?
Yeah.
900 something? The extra sped, so nothing else is, those are the major things that were eliminated already?
Well, the extra sped was just the elimination of the ETL position.
About this fed teacher at East Meadow.
Well, that's to fund that position.
Wow.
You're talking 18 teachers, that's what you're talking.
And where do you proceed getting those?
Class sizes that nobody wants to have, and probably the scale-back or elimination of some programs in this building. That's what we're looking at. You can't nickel and dime this out of supplies.
No way, you're kidding me, it's almost a million dollars.
And we, there are two new positions in there. The network support specialist for the technology department, that could be one position that could be eliminated. And the second maintenance person, so we'd only be paying for half the maintenance person, but that'd be $62,000. So you're still talking 17 teachers.
And then that doesn't even take off that much anyway, it doesn't, you know, help the gap further.
Yeah, that's the thing.
But I do know a few years ago, you know, I mean, you had the override, however long ago that was. And I wanna say that Andy said, it was like either four or five years ago was when school choice was used to balance the budget. So that was sort of like a one-time additional override, but those funds don't exist any longer.
Well, that's not how you balance your budget anymore. I mean, that's such a variable.
Right. That's why the conventional wisdom is, spend a year back, keep the year urine. We don't have that luxury right now.
So I think Jim asked the question, but just to make sure that I understand and will understand, that the gap that we're looking at, it's after you already made an attempt to shave whatever can be taken off, because it's not necessarily required or whatever, right now?
I mean, we did a first pass, we did not have the more difficult conversations that would need to be had.
So I'm still... So where's our, where's our largest jump in operations?
Um, salaries, we're labor-intensive.
But when I look at the... But when I look at the, um, you know, central office, plant, health, people, buildings, um, that adds up to almost a million dollars again, that we're, because some of them are going down.
Well, the reality of it is, Emery, I mean, if you think about it from last year, right? We started at a gap of about eight hundred thousand dollars, right, roughly?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
This is no different.
Yeah.
We're, we're a year later. We know the figures are more accurate, because we've done the zero-based budgeting. This is no different than, than where we started last year.
I mean, it would be pulling out all technology, because you haven't funded technology in years. It would be scaling back on all maintenance.
I certainly suspected that after you completed the zero-based budgeting, um, endeavor, that the, the bottom line is gonna go up, and not down.
Mm-hmm.
I certainly wasn't expecting it to go down.
Neither.
It always goes up, if for nothing else, you know, the, the, uh, adjustments to salary scales and everything, it just, you know, it goes up.
But I meant in, in addition to that, because now you have all administrators and staff looking at their budget, really looking at their budget, you know, for how things need to be run efficiently. So, in other words, if we knocked out the zero-based budgeting and started the same way we looked at it last year, we, we'd be doing it the same way, cutting, 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 and...
Right. And I, I, I think I understand what you're saying. The one hope that I had through that zero-based budgeting, where we're gonna have the opportunity, or, you know, everybody else were, was going to have the opportunity to say, okay, I know that these are things on my shopping list.
Mm-hmm.
And here's what I absolutely need, I can't let go, otherwise I'm, I'm sacrificing quality. These are things that we should very seriously consider, because this is, you know, say, it aligns with our, uh, strategic plan, or whatever it is. But in other category, wow, we could postpone these things. And we slowly get into that habit of looking at our budgeting process that way.
The problem is that...
But right now, it looks like you already did that.
Yeah, the problem, we did a first blush. But the problem is that there are so many things that have been neglected or cut for so long. That I, that there's a difficult choice that has to be made.
And that, and that's exactly what it is. And I don't, I mean, just, again, just, just to make sure that we are all on the, the, uh, right page. I don't think any one of us, at least around this table, are thinking differently, or are thinking that, you know, it wasn't neglected, that we don't need it, that this is extravagant. That's not that. But also, there is the other side of it. Where, especially in a year where we went to the town with, you know, a building project and all that, how are we gonna make up for that difference? And if we cannot, what does it mean for the district?
There's the sixty-five thousand dollar question, Emery.
Yeah.
The nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
Exactly.
Not that expensive, Deanne.
And I'll go back to the administration, and we'll have to have some very hard conversations about how close can we get?
Well, you know, we can have as many hard conversations as we want. We're not gonna get to the number. That is the reality of it, and I think we can all agree on that.
Yeah.
So, you know, is that the right, is that the right approach to take? Because that's the same approach that we take every single year. We cut to the bare bone and then some, so that, you know, teachers and staff don't have what they need in order to do their jobs.
Or?
Or?
Do we get creative with the town? Today, I went to the second, uh, series of meetings that's been organized, actually by the superintendent of Mohawk, um, Trail Regional School District. And I'm going to another meeting tomorrow at Pathfinder, it's being organized by the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools and, uh, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, to talk about the issues that small districts face. And how do we become a force together to influence what's going on in Beacon Hill? Because as far as the Commonwealth is concerned, in the seat of government, the state ends at Route four ninety-five. We are the wild west.
Exactly.
Um, and I think part of the conversation we could be having with the, um, select board and the finance committee in a couple of weeks, and I did hear from the select board, two members will be able to be here. I've not heard from the finance committee, so I'll make a phone call and see if I can get an answer to that question. But I think it's, what are some of the issues that face us corporately as a town? Because when, at the end of the day, it is one pot of money. Yeah, chapter seventy comes our way, school choice comes our way. They get assessed for school choice, we get charter reimbursement, they pay for charter reemb, charter tuitions. Well, they charge it back to us as in-kind. Um, so, but at the end of the day, it's all one big pot of money. And how can we think creatively as a group of town and school officials about how we, or what are the problems that we're seeing? Are all of the town departments struggling with these very same issues? That we can't keep operating at the level we were operating, once operating at, because the town doesn't have the money to go that far? How do we solve these problems? What do we do to come together, you know? I used Granby as an example for meeting today, and said, we have done a joint department of public facilities. We have joint forces with the town to have a single department. Um, and that we're trying to work to have some economy of scale and, and whatnot with all of the town and school buildings. Um, the example with Hadley, rather than pay sixty-five thousand dollars for two days a week of a behavior specialist, why not go sixty, forty, and save twenty thousand dollars while you're at it, and get more services for it? Um, so those kinds of things. I know the town, for example, contracts out for all of their IT work. They have no computer specialist, everything is contracted out to Acuity. Do we look at a joint technology department? That allows us to keep a network specialist in? And the town, you know, we corporately, because again, it is all one big pot of money, do we corporately save some funds? Because then the town can cut down on the amount of contracted services they're paying out to keep servers and whatnot running? I don't know. I'm just trying to, you know, are there some creative solutions that if we show that we're trying to work together, that we sort of change the culture and the thought process about them versus us? And how do we address these issues? And then how do we deal with, um, you know, uh, one of the examples that was put up in front of us was, um, what they call sparsity aid, which is something they do in Wisconsin, uh, for rural school districts, depending on what the threshold is. But the state actually gives three hundred dollars per student for, uh, what they would consider rural communities with X number of kids in a ten-mile radius, or, or whatever. Um, you know, do we talk to the legislature about that kind of stuff? This whole business about charter schools and lifting the cap will decimate us up here. It will decimate us up here. And Boston doesn't seem to understand that.
Well, because Boston is looking through their own lens.
Right.
One of the reasons why I didn't really mind staying with the collaborative assignment, because the conversation in that group is going in that direction as well. Before, we basically sat down, looked at the budget, had a couple of conversations, and then left. The last six months or so, maybe a little longer, the conversation is around these various specific issues that impact everyone on the western side of the state, which is a great thing, and I'm glad to hear that it's happening at different, uh, meetings at different levels.
At the table with us, so.
Right, who?
Bill Deal, the executive director from the...
Oh, he was, okay, great.
Has also been at the table with us.
Um, the, the challenge is this. I don't know that that's gonna have a real impact anytime very soon. So, and we are really faced with something immediate.
At the state level.
So, um, and otherwise, there are even more immediate things that we may be able to do. On April twenty-sixth, there is, uh, Day on the Hill. You know, we can have some representatives go in there and just spend some time and, you know, uh, speak our minds, and I don't know if anybody has a timeline if you're going or not, but, uh, um, so, I mean, there are some opportunities. Um, our state senator, uh, they asked, you know, when would be a good time? I think I shared that with you, I shared our, uh, meeting times. He already visited a few, I understand, in the area, he's willing to come to here. We can, we can, you know, extend and expand that.
Right.
We can have a lot of conversations, but I don't know, again, that those conversations will help with this one.
Yeah.
So as we get into those creative conversations, and I completely agree that we have to have those conversations, they're long, long overdue. Um, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, um, lead the way. And it's not because we are trying to usurp anybody else's, you know, responsibility and accountability, but also there is, there, there is a factual side to it, that we have the largest, um, we are the largest employer with the largest budget.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and largest share of the budget in this, uh, in this town. It, it behooves us on one side, but also, it is almost, um, a necessity for us to leave that. And some folks may still see it as us trying to do it our way, but to the extent that we can show this as a, uh, cooperation and collaboration, and that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be, uh, we can do that. But if we just wait for something to happen, and everybody's suddenly saying, hey, you know what? Good, good idea, let's just do it. We've been having this conversation, I think, every year over and over, how we can get together, put a strategic plan together for the entire town. Look at the options, not hold anything back, uh, related to schools, related to town. Look at business opportunities, look at this, look at that. I don't know that we ever got anywhere with that. So we may, well, need to, uh, leave the charter. Again, uh, what do we do with this? That's the thing. And I, I will echo what you said, and I think it reflects what we're all thinking. We don't really wanna cut just to cut numbers, uh, you know, in a very corporate way, just, you know, across the board, we're gonna cut such expenses, because there's no end to it. Just like, you know, we told the finance committee last year, that there's no end to taking money out of stabilization either. Because it's, you know, it's now, it's become a little smaller. We can just continuously take money from, uh, fixed pot. Um, so how do we, how do we address these things, that's one issue? How do we address this one that is in front of us? That's a big one, and, I don't know. I actually, I lost some sleep last night. I spent a lot of time in front of this spreadsheet, trying to see, hoping that there was some error somewhere that, you know, I could, you know, magically discover. Uh, and unfortunately, there was none, uh, at least not that I could see. Uh, you, you found your own apparently, but, uh...
Well, and I was, and again, you look at these numbers so often, and it's like your eyes are crossed. So, um, you know, I finally, as Andy and I have a standing joke, I do former friend, so I called him yesterday and said, just look at this with me and tell me what I'm missing. And he said, in-kind, and I went, oh, man, you know? And I had just inputted the new numbers in. It had gotten lost in the formula.
The figures in the, the left duty down the purple, are those, are those, uh...
That's House one, that's the governor's budget right now?
But are those, is that what we're going on? Is that gonna be it?
Um, House two is coming out of Ways and Means on Wednesday, I learned that today.
So, if, our figures are different than House one? Does it mean that we have an expectation that it's gonna be different than House one?
Um, I don't know, we'll have to see how this works its way through the legislature. We'll see what the House does with it. Those numbers will come out of Ways and Means on Wednesday. And then, um, we'll go on the floor. Um, the Senate probably won't get to the budget until June.
Best-case scenario?
Best-case scenario is we might see a bump up in chapter seventy, an extra twenty-five dollars per student. That's what happened last year through the legislature.
Which will give us what?
It's not even twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't have a thousand students. It's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's best-case scenario?
I would guess, yes.
Now, what's the, I'm just trying to look at, right, the stuff from last year, I was trying to look at. Not that we wanna compare, but...
Right.
The, the highest figure I see on the sheet you've given us is eleven million something, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Eleven-one?
Mm-hmm.
That's also...
That's all funds, that's everything that's offset by everything else.
But a year ago, I had one that showed, we're, we're over twelve, we were twelve-two.
I remember that number.
Yeah.
So what is, where is the, how could we've been there a year ago? And now, we're still trying to add some things in, and we're still less than figures we were looking at a year ago?
Because, in part, because of some special education costs. Um, we've had some, some kids move out of the district, so that has caused some, some shifts. Um, we've had some people retire or leave the system and have been replaced with lower-paid teachers.
And another factor is that you referred earlier that I showed, we're spending about, we're taking a hundred thousand less out of school choice this year than we did a year ago. A year ago, I think we...
That's, um, that's the projected school choice number that came out on the cherry sheet?
Last year, we were seven hundred seventy-one thousand, now we're only putting six sixty-seven. So there's, there's a hundred thousand dollars just in school choice money that we do not have in the bank there.
Right. But you didn't necessarily see that within the mix of the budget, um, last year, because that was kind of off to the side. So, things have been put in, and then, you know, offsets have been, have been dealt with from there. The transportation number also, because we didn't approve the contract until pretty late in the game, the transportation contract was a hundred thousand, was budgeted at a hundred thousand more, but because we went down to the two runs, we're down to five, five hundred and change. So that's another change.
So is that being budgeted accurately? Because remember, we had leftover money last year, that, that same deal we were working, you know? Which we talked to the finance committee about, that even though town was paying for that, we did get, we did get probably over a hundred thousand that was able to stay in the school budget, right?
Right, right.
That was over?
Right.
That's over.
Right, we have accurately reflected the contract.
And there's another, I guess, in a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
We don't have that, we add.
So that's probably the main bump up from the eight hundred when I first came last year to the nine sixty-eight now that you're looking at, Jim, is probably that transportation number.
Right. So in terms of, you know, cutting this down a bit, we gotta, I'm sure we're starting to look at, we gotta look at the least things that impact kids in the classroom.
Exactly.
This has always been the mantra.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe classrooms were twenty-four, twenty-five, we're not like it, but we don't think what the choices are.
Mm-hmm.
If this is accurate, which we have to believe it is. Because we're not gonna get additional money from the town, but they don't have it either. Right, Emery?
Yes.
They don't, it's not there. I mean, the town's already given us, told me, and I said, so we can't use the stabilization, give us money out of there, because that's, that's not there now. They gave it for the new school, they gave it for the new school, which is correct and fine. But we better keep the system together, because we got a new school opening in a couple of years, and it's gotta be supported, and that, there are people in it. We can't afford to lose more people who choose to go elsewhere, which would kill us. Drastically kill us if people decide to...
And that's really what the big problem is, is that you've got people who are making choices to send kids out.
Are we getting applications for kids who wanna come here? How's that going?
All your way. We've gotten one so far. One is better than none.
That's not gonna do it.
Nope.
First grade, I hope?
Eighth grade. Yeah, but you've gotten some phone calls, so.
Yeah, and I've sent paperwork out. So, six have gone out, one is back.
Do schools never market themselves? I've never seen, like, anything out of the box. Do you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I, I said that last year.
It seems crazy to me, why don't we have like a, you know, we have, um, kids in the school who love YouTube. Have them make some YouTube videos. Get them out there, kids can see what's going on here. Get their parents to call and say, hey, listen, this looks awesome.
Yeah, and if we increase, if we increase class sizes to twenty-four, twenty-five, I mean, that's a big factor for parents, when they consider...
Yeah. And sports and everything else, I mean, one, one is all connected to the other.
And here we are, talking about cutting and developing a marketing plan.
I don't know.
No, I think it's, do you see the irony in it?
I know, yes, we want more kids.
I mean, it's just...
Yes.
I agree, we, that's how you, that's how we bring in more kids, by having really strong schools and smaller class sizes and great programs, and yet, we're talking about cutting those very things. And yet, we're talking about cutting those very things.
Well, let me, uh, make a suggestion here. Let that, uh, sit down with the senior leadership team and let Lee begin a tough conversation, and let's see where that conversation takes us.
That's fair.
And, uh...
So, I don't know. I, I think we also, as a committee, need to have some, have some other conversations other than cutting.
Well, we have, I mean, that's, that's true, but we already know what the two extremes are, right? Just, uh, it's basically, one side is saying, this is what it is. This is how it needs to be run. I don't know that it's gonna be as dramatic as this. But regardless of what it is, whatever that increase is, is just go to the town and say, this is what we need extra, there's no way it can be wrong. The other side is having some conversations still to reduce these numbers, but in a more meaningful way than we did in the past. Honestly, some of the cuts that we made in the past, I barely understood how they aligned with whatever we were trying to do, why we were cutting certain positions and not some others, why we were cutting positions to begin with in some cases, because the following year immediately, we've replaced those positions because we realized that we were causing gaps.
Mm-hmm.
So if we can do whatever we're gonna do to reduce these numbers in a meaningful way and have our own story in order as we go to the town, it is probably the best thing we can do for ourselves. We, because we never had the narrative that really was well-tied and presented to the town the last so many years that I've been on this board.
So that's the discussion that we need to start having. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be honest. I'm not gonna lie. Having, you know, brainstorming session on camera is, is not comfortable for me.
No, it's hard.
It's, it's hard because...
It's that open meeting law.
Exactly. No, and I just want to finish that statement so it makes sense for people who are watching. It's, you know, when you're throwing out ideas, that's all they are, are ideas.
Right.
But it's very scary to the people hearing them.
Exactly. It's not, it's not only scary, but it turns into a rumor mill, which turns into eventually some kind of fact, which it's not, because it's just an idea. You know, but that's where you start.
It's scary to the people that work for us.
Exactly.
But it's reality. It's reality. We have to have these conversations.
I'm just saying that I, I wanna throw that out there, because I, I think we need to be mindful. Well, we know that.
But everyone knows that. Every person in these buildings, I'm sure, knows that, you know, where they stand in the whole scheme of things. Things are gonna not even look the same. And it's, it's a terrible thing, but, um, you can't do anything but put it on the table.
And I'm gonna repeat something that I said a year ago, is that, you know, theoretically, we could go to the town and say, this is what we need. Um, but my whole idea last year of a, of a, um, a strategic group to look at what we could do is, we were supposed to go to the town and say, yep, we know we keep asking for money, but here are some ideas so that we can try to sustain our position better. And that, I don't know where that went. So we have nothing to say to the town that, we get it. We know we're asking for this money, but we're looking at ways to do something different, to think out of the box, to, um, create ways to not have this, this size gap every year.
Well, part of that process, though, we have completed. And that was, and we, and that's one thing we committed to last year, was the, um, zero-based budgeting. You know, it's hard to know exactly what your budget is if you don't know exactly what your budget is. So we had to go through that process. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm actually confirming that, what you just said, that, you know, we have started taking, taking steps.
Steps, yeah.
You know, so we at least have a clearer idea. I feel more confident that this number is more accurate than I felt last year.
I agree.
You know, the gap last year, it was like, it just, this, to me, feels more accurate.
Yeah.
Rightly or wrongly.
Right. Well, again, there's a bucket load of money in there for technology items that you have not funded for years. We've done it on donations. The Granby Music Parents Association has funded the music budget, which is an approved curriculum of the school committee. Those numbers are in here.
Yeah. So these are real numbers?
Which puts you in a moral dilemma. You have approved this program, and then you're gonna say to these people, but we don't have the funds to fund the program that we have approved. So it puts you in that moral dilemma of then saying to the Granby Music Parents, we need you to fund our approved program.
Mm-hmm, right.
And God bless them. They're willing to fundraise their hearts out to make sure that that happens.
Right.
You know, but at some point...
They could fund better stuff.
You know, but I mean, but if...
What they don't fund.
But I mean, if the town decides that the children need quality arts in their schools, then that's a responsibility of the town to fund. If the town feels as though technology is something that is vital for kids to be able to learn, then that should be the responsibility of the town to fund. And that, that's where this whole ethical dilemma comes in, is, you know, it's wonderful that the Granby Music Parents do what they do, but, you know, Emery asked me that question. Do they really? Yeah. Did you put it in? Yes, we did. Do we take it out? Do we take out all the tech? Do we take out anything that even remotely looks like a new position? You know, John was asking for a new van. Do we take the van out? Do we look at another mode of, you know, there are those forms that I filled out last year to get a couple of things funded that, you know, the finance committee has a couple of pockets that they can, they have control over. Do we say we need a twenty-five thousand dollar van and take it out of this, this equation?
And so we do all of that, right? And we're, we're right back...
And it still only takes out a couple hundred thousand.
It takes out a couple hundred thousand, and we're right back to where we started last year, which is, we have, we have a great vision statement, we have a great strategic plan, but we're cutting everything for us to reach those goals.
Let's see, great educational, that's...
So... So I'm gonna throw out the first idea. I'll throw out the first crazy idea. Uh, the lot, we have a long-term plan and we have a short-term plan. And the long-term plan is what Judy was talking about, you know, for FY eighteen, right? And all those various, um, you know, advocating for, to, to the state and everything else. You know, we ha, we start working hard towards reaching that long-term goal. In the short term, we go back to the town and we go to the select board and the finance committee to shore up our budget for this year. And also with the same...
What's what we're looking at?
Well, you know, obviously, still going through the exercise of, you know, doing what we need to do to make other decreases in the budget, knowing that no matter what, we're not gonna get to the nine-hundred thousand dollar number.
No, exactly.
No matter what we do, we are not going to even come close to that.
We didn't do it last year.
No. So I didn't, right now, I tried to do very quickly what I did in a couple of hours last night. One thing that I'm still trying to wrap my head around is this. The foundation budget didn't change that dramatically
No.
since last year, right?
No.
The in-kind, foundation budget is one component. Then we have the in-kind, then we have the operations.
Mm-hmm.
More or less, that's what we're looking at. So given that in-kind did not change except for a couple of hundred dollars that it went down, foundation is almost the same, plus the three-hundred-and-five that, you know, finance committee committed to, and then we know we're gonna have. That's why I keep on asking, you know, it has to be somewhere on the, on the operations side. And I'm looking the, at this, uh, all funds, uh, tab. The difference since last year is about four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars or so.
Mm-hmm.
Not that that is a, that is good news or anything, but, you know, it, I mean, when we had, last had the conversation, it looked like it was around three-hundred-something thousand. I just got some hope that with some exercise, we could actually bring it down to some very...
Yeah.
Now we're at this close to a million dollar gap. It's, it, not doubting anybody's expertise or, uh, professionalism on this. Is there a way to check some of these formulas again?
Yeah, I'll go back in and recheck everything. I mean, I've looked at them a gazillion times, but I'll work them through again with TMS. I don't have a problem doing that, just to double-check and make sure that I haven't missed something or double-counted something or whatever. I have no problem doing that.
'Cause, you know, very quickly, if you guys don't mind, when I look at it, even visually inspecting it...
No, I'll go back in and look.
Okay.
I have no problem doing that.
All right. In fact, this is actually, I'm, I'm basically... Since last year, it is three-twenty-two to seven-fifty-six, so that, that's four-hundred-and, um, thirty-four, which is exactly what I have.
Which one?
Right here, is, you know, the difference from last year's LEA to this year's LEA. Not that it means anything, that's basically, you're over here.
It's about a half a million dollars.
Right?
Yep.
But what, the reason why I'm dwelling on that is because if nothing else changed, something is causing our numbers to go up this year.
Mm-hmm. Well, I could probably take a couple hundred thousand dollars just off the top of my head without talking to anybody. I could tell you, a couple hundred thousand dollars. You have seventy-five thousand dollars in, uh, district, um, reserve. We take it out. Uh, we take out the network technician, that's forty thousand. We take out, um, the maintenance person, half a maintenance person, there's another twenty-two thousand. Um, we spare, we pare back all technology asks and, you know, take out things that have been funded like by the Granby Music Parents and some other things, we're probably looking at another hundred thousand. I can buy you two-hundred thousand dollars just off the top of my head. Is it what I want to do? No. Is it what I probably will have to do? Yes.
Is it philosophically the way we wanna go?
Not in my mind.
I agree with that. I mean, how is that in the best interest? We are in the twenty-first century.
But in order to keep that, then you gotta put thirty, thirty-five kids in a class. I mean, those are the, those are the situations you're looking at. Or you, you totally do away with art and music. You cut the specials out. That's been talked about for years in all different school systems. Is that what you wanna do? If you don't do these kinda things, you're gonna have to do those kinda things. No sports, cut sports out. I mean, you can go all over the place. Cut sports out. I mean, that's the things you get to. Those are the things you have to talk about. If you don't, if you can't talk about these things, then you gotta talk about those things. There's always something. It's not good, but it has to be done, because the town is not gonna all of a sudden give us seven-hundred thousand dollars, because they've got it somewhere. It isn't gonna happen.
I'm not, I'm not expecting that they would, and nor would I ask them to. I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering, could it, could it be more of a combination of things instead of this or that? Can it be this and that and that and that?
Yeah, the menu could be unbelievable, what you have to do. The menu could be unbelievable.
Well, let me go back and, uh, search the numbers some more.
Okay.
See where I come up with them.
So, here's a question. We're gonna have the select board and finance committee come over in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Two ways of looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna have a conversation sooner than later? Or at that time, are we even gonna be prepared to have a meaningful conversation? Or is it just our way of saying, look, you know what? This is what we have. We did our darndest, and this is what we have, and we're sharing with you, so you know it. And if they're not watching on TV already, or they don't, you know, look at our minutes or whatever.
Mm-hmm. I'll go back through the numbers. I'll go back through all the spreadsheets, I'll make sure everything is accurate, and then whatever, I'll get other sets of eyes to double-check formulas just to make sure I haven't made a mistake. I've, you know, spent a lot of time with this workbook, so, you know, if something's awry, that could be part of the problem, who knows? Um, you know, um, but I don't mind doing that again. I don't mind having another conversation with the administration to say, what do we take out?
Just, I, I thank you. Please, let's just do that, because, you know, I guess, except for spending a few more hours, we don't really have anything to lose at this point.
Right.
That's, that's gonna be our waste if it becomes waste.
I don't mind doing any and all of that. Absolutely not. I'll sit down with Archie and Andy and just kind of make sure that, um, everything's in order here and that we've got numbers the way they should be.
Yeah. So making full circle, going back to what you mentioned earlier in the conversation.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have, it doesn't make any sense. I'm speaking personally here, if anybody else feels the same way, you know, just we can have longer conversations someday, but, um, it doesn't make any sense for me, for instance, to come have all these wonderful conversations, but knowing that we are on a path where we're not gonna be able to sustain what we are all committed to. I mean, that's the reality of things. We cannot just have a million-dollar gap or whatever, have a million-dollar gap every year and expect that, you know, we're gonna be able to support this, right? So what you suggested earlier becomes even more important.
Mm-hmm.
The role of this committee is a committee that doesn't just stay limited to this room, but go out to other folks in town, have continuous conversations.
Mm-hmm.
And some of those conversations are not gonna be the best conversations, are not gonna be easy conversations. There will be back and forth, because we're gonna try to make our case, but at least we're gonna put everything on the table, and everybody will know what we are dealing with.
Mm.
'Cause it is possible that it may seem to some folks that, you know, we'll let the year go by, and every year around this time, you know, March, April, we just come back and say, oh, half a million to a million-dollar gap right there. Again, it's not that we planned that way,
Right.
but, you know, things that are, you know, going naturally, beyond our control, to be able to run a school, uh, system the way it should be run, this is where we find ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
But the other leg of that is this. Granby's Granby. We can have some good conversations, but unless this problem is solved, addresses the root cause of most of our problems on this side of the state at the very least, and probably there are some school districts on the other side as well that are suffering, but mostly on this side, um, there's no way, anyone, because th, this is basically, the conversation that we had right now is very, very similar to the conversation we had at the collaborative board of directors just a few weeks ago. Folks were saying the same thing, and some of them were saying, look, even the school choice conversation that we're having is basically akin to cannibalism.
Mm.
We're basically eating each other's budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm hoping that you're gonna lose some people who will come my way. I mean, people are not gonna come from Boston to Granby.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're hoping to get some kids from the neighboring towns to, to Granby. That's the way we're hoping to sustain our budgets.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's not the way to run any system, let alone an educational system. So we need to, I mean, if you, if everybody wants to have Eric Lesser here, we should have a conversation sooner than later. We can reach out to Stan Rosenberg. Uh, he might be interested. Our, uh, state representatives, they would be interested in being here.
I, I think...
At least to make our case.
Right.
I think one of the things that, um, you know, 'cause I, I have been speaking to Eric in his, in his office, and I, I think that one of the important things is to make them And I, I think that one of the important things is to make them sit here and really feel how hard it, the, the reality of it. Not to just hear it from a, okay, so, you know, Granby has this problem, and, you know, Amherst has this problem. I mean, they, they hear it, they've been going to see different towns. But I mean, I think that, um, making sure that they hear the reality of it. And if we don't have this money, this is what's going to happen. They need to feel it, not just hear it on surface.
Superintendent told me he's closed down three elementary schools, two of which are still under MSBA grants. So there is that provision of what they call the clawback, repaying the grant to the MSBA. He's in that situation. I mean, this is, this is something that's being felt. Uh, I listened to my colleagues from the Berkshires talk today. Yai, yai. Berkshire County has the highest average age of, uh, populous in the Commonwealth. Kids are not moving in. Another thing, Stan Rosenberg, the first meeting we had of these folks at Mohawk, one of Stan's aides came out and said, one of the things that's happening is we also have to learn how to deal with people like the Mass Municipal Association, who has been telling its members, don't make your communities kid-friendly because it's going to cost you. So that's the conversation that's coming from that state organization. So those are some of the political surrounds. So none of us, as a small community, can do this work by ourselves. We need a collective voice. And, um, you know, I, I reached out to Eric Lesser, knowing that the charter school bill was out there. Eric voted in favor of the charter school bill, but the governor will never sign that. Never. Because there's a whole other agenda.
It was actually much better than what's currently happening. But he won't sign it.
No, he won't sign it. I mean, it's not the best bill, but it was a bill that established some parameters and watched out for the interests of this part of the state. We are at a golden moment. If for nothing else, we may not have population out here. But we have the two, two of the most powerful people in the legislature in Western Mass, Stan Rosenberg and Steve Kulik, who's the vice chair of House Ways and Means.
Can we get him out here?
I know Steve very well. Steve used to represent Belchertown in part. And Steve has got an ear, and there are things that we have said to him that he didn't even realize himself. But how do we have a conversation with the town about, hmm, is there a way we could combine forces around technology? So that maybe, because anytime you contract something else, contract something out, it's more expensive. So they're paying to the same company that we pay to help support David with the network. They're paying them to run the entire network on the town side. Do we, again, it's all one big pot when it's all said and done. Do we figure out a way to combine the tech departments and cause a decrease in the contracted services that the town is paying, and pay our own employees and have a shared tech department? I don't know. Maybe that's another way to do that. Are there things that, you know, Cheryl and I could be looking at with our colleagues in other districts? Are there personnel that, like Hadley and, and Granby will do? Are there personnel that we could share?
I think it's time to get creative.
You know, are there ways that we can look at some of the, these things and be creative, and be creative and help each other? Because we can, the, you know, I know what the, the first question will be is can we close down the high school? And it's not a district that is close enough to us that has room for us.
We keep hearing that. It's always online. Regional, we should just regionalize them. Like, do you even understand what that means?
Where do you, what, 400 students?
And, and not only that, but like, they think it's actually going to like, like, it wouldn't cost us anything.
Yeah.
And they don't understand all the cost that actually goes into it and makes it more expensive.
Right. And what they don't understand is then you, in essence, lay off all your teachers or you have to renegotiate contracts with whoever you combine forces with, even if you had somebody you could combine forces with. So you've got a whole other layer of contractual stuff going on. It takes years to regionalize. You can't just flip a switch tomorrow and it's done. It takes years to get through this process.
But not only that, you still have to pay for your students to be educated.
Right.
And so, whatever you send them, you're still paying.
Yeah, it's not just-
You don't just go, bye, and, you know, and I think that's what people-
It's only a two-and-a-half hour bus ride.
I mean, I think that, that, that's what people don't understand in town, because we see it on Facebook, literally, like, on a weekly basis. And I keep saying to people, this is not, you know, that is not how it works. I actually, I actually posted an entire article from DESI about the cons. Everybody knows the pros. We got that down. Everybody got that. I posted a whole article on the cons of in this area, regionalizing, and everything that it would cost. And people were like, oh, I didn't know that. Well, no, I know. That's why I'm posting it.
Yeah, but Mohawk, for example, is a district that covers 250 square miles. And they're at the mercy of regional transportation reimbursement from the state, which is also something that can be subject to the governor's 9C cuts midstream.
Yeah, yep.
You know, and, you know, okay, so we can regionalize transportation, we'll get something back. There's no guarantee about what you get back on transportation regionalized. And in January, the governor could say, I'm sorry, I'm cutting regional transportation aid by blah, blah, blah. And you're sunk halfway through the year.
Not to mention the long bus rides. I mean, people do not realize what it does to a kid to be on a bus for two and a half hours a day. Because really, by the time you, you know, they're, they're riding in the morning, say it's a 45-minute ride in the morning, 45-minute ride, that's an hour and a half just on a bus, which is ridiculous.
And it's not a coach bus.
No. It's a nice little school bus, if you're up.
You know, there's a lot of irony in all these things. But I enjoy all the charity work, you know, the likes of Bill Gates and stuff. You know, at one point, the whole thing was, we're going to give a laptop to every kid in this, you know, development country. And I'm thinking, wow, you know, we could use those, you know, just that we're giving to our kids. And where are you when we could, we could do something with it? So how should we wrap this conversation? Obviously, there's a lot to be said. But we should not just limit it to our technical conversation around numbers. But how do we really, maybe you and I can talk and then invite, start inviting some people sooner than later?
You asked a question before, um, about how, how we approach the town. You know, are we just, do we initiate the conversation as kind of the initial brainstorming session? Or do we show up more prepared?
I would say option two.
That's what I think.
Which begs the question, can we find a night next week that everybody could meet?
I think we have to. I think we knew it was coming to this, and-
Next week is, uh, school vacation.
And we, we tried to play calendar bingo last time. Yeah, we gave up.
Yeah. You can't do it Monday because it is a municipal holiday, so technically you can't conduct business. Although I'll be in.
Even if we, I mean- It's a holiday.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You can't, you can't have, uh, government meetings.
Yeah. I'll be here, but-
Yeah, Thursday, we have school building committee.
How early could people get here Thursday?
I could do it Thursday. I would be here at seven. That's the earliest I could get here.
School building meeting is set 6:30, so that's-
I have a meeting Thursday night.
Hello, Wednesday then.
I can do Wednesday. I think it was somebody else that couldn't.
I have a hard time on Wednesdays. I couldn't get here until like 7 o'clock.
Is that doable?
I'm checking.
For, for anybody else?
I can't, I have something that I can. I can.
Thursday was out. How about Tuesday? Was Tuesday out?
Tuesday, same thing for me. I could, I could make it here for seven.
The question would, the question would be, but that's not good for you, Jim, right?
No, but I, you know, if nobody else can make it, you know, we can, we have to give something up, I guess.
I'm good Tuesday evening. I am more than like the good Wednesday evening. Um, there's a recurring meeting, but the recurring meeting actually should end this week. So I'm, I'm good both Tuesday and Wednesday evening. Anytime.
Wednesday's okay if we can do it at seven or-
If we could do it Wednesday, that would buy me just more time. I don't know who's on date, who's taking what for time next week. I'll have to find out from them.
Wednesday, seven?
Jim, can you do Wednesday?
Yeah.
So how about Wednesday at seven then?
Sounds good. Let's do that. It's the 20th?
Yes. It'll be a one-item agenda budget. The other thing too is that, um, Emery and I did receive letters from the capital planning committee. Um, and they don't intend to entertain any of that plan until FY18. So I don't know if that gives you a little more leverage on the operating budget. Because you had half a million dollars you were thinking about for next fiscal year. Um, they gave no rationale. They just said they weren't going to entertain anything until FY18.
I think we have to.
So just a thought.
We have to find the-
I think only a single one capital item period in the whole town, I think, from when I was told, I remember.
Is it a single capital item stuff?
Yep. That, I, I have to assume that's correct, but I don't know for a fact.
Do we know what that capital item is?
Police vehicle, maybe? With what, 30 something thousand?
So I guess we're good for next Wednesday? Are we good for our open part of our meeting? Okay.
Um, we do need to have a discussion about with this information.
Which information?
This capital planning information.
Yeah, this, I actually officially, I, I think I mentioned it before, just I have to officially get back to them. Um, I don't know whether this is what you had in mind when you were mentioning it, that at this point, when we're having these conversations, I don't really know whether it makes sense to just go back and pressure to have uh, that in place. Um, we have, again, we have to have the story, the right story in place for that. But aside from that, um, the, the manner in which we found out that there wasn't even going to be a conversation, I don't think it is reflective of what you were saying earlier too, that, you know, we have to have these conversations. We have to understand our needs. That's why we, you know, all have to operate together. We basically found out in a letter, a single-sentence letter, actually, that everything is postponed till FY18, and we're not going to consider it. It would be nice to find out what the, what the reasons are. Also, it would be nice for us to be able to make our case. Because in the case, at least of a boiler, is that a boiler that we were talking? There, you know, if it doesn't go, awesome, we'll be grateful. But it's, it's old enough and dysfunctional enough that it might just give, which could cause some hardship in the school. We have to replace it anyway at that time. Then we have to go back to the town and ask for money. So it may actually cause some, uh, repercussions down the road. We have to be able to articulate those reasons why we ask for the amounts that we're asking for.
Hypothetically, if a boiler, you know, it gave, um, what, what would happen?
You'd have to replace it. These boilers are original to this building.
If it's in the middle of winter, you may potentially have to call it off.
No, I, I understand that, but the boiler company is not going to come in in the goodness of their heart and change the boilers without payment.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
I'm asking hypothetically, how would we-
It would have to be emergency appropriation, you've got to fix it.
And we ask for, like, oh, that's, yeah, what you do.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering-
Well, yeah, there is a way to get that, but, yeah.
Have you heard from Matt, from Guardian yet?
No.
Okay, I'll call him.
Because, and also potentially the roof.
Well, roof was going to go on to here too.
I know that, but it's not as though the roof is in, um, you know, even good shape or average shape.
Right. Okay, so are we good to go into our executive session? Do we have anything else to discuss? Okay.
Now that I've shared the good news with you.
All right. So we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part 8.3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Deanne Payne Murkowski, aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye.
Marie McCourt, aye.
Jim Peters, aye.
Emery Ervin, aye.